Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we want to introduce her, new employee?
No, I don't.
Okay. We're just gonna bore her. All right, well, good morning. Public comments, anybody? Anybody in the audience? I see nobody. Agenda review and adoption, can I get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Urdeman, second by Anderson to approve the agenda, the agenda review and adoption. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Don't we have the amendment?
With an amendment.
Right here, sir.
That's the one you keep talking about.
Yes, sir.
I'll modify and approve the amendment.
Okay.
If he accepts that amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Urdeman, do you accept the amendment?
I do.
And Anderson? Okay, now, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item 1.4, approval of the May 6, 2025 minutes.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch moves and Commissioner Fahy seconds approval of the May 6, 2025 minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, community announcements. Seeing none. Commissioner Lynch.
If I could, I'd just like to remind everyone, make sure that we have a very celebration for Memorial Day. Make sure that you come and honor our war dead, that we're free human beings walking on the United States of America. And we owe that to the, some of our veterans who did not make it back, so.
Well said.
Mr. Chair, I had the same comment with Memorial Day being on the 26th. Please attend a local event and honor those serving and who have served. And also remember to buy a poppy and support the veterans.
Very good. Commissioner Urdeman?
Mine might be a little longer, but we all have the, we all have the privilege of serving on a number of committees. And we just came out of legislative priorities. It's not lost on us and a number of people, staff hundreds of hours of preparation and monitoring. We invest in lobbyists to keep tabs on what's going on there as well. And the news isn't great for the local folks. There's, there will likely be significant shifts to the local level. And we are toiling and spending a good amount of time trying to figure out what it means and what we're gonna do about it. And I think the world's full of figure pointers. Most of the conversation today was talked about solutions. And really, the solutions for us at the local level are to inform our local residents of what's going on so they can be aware and talk to their lawmakers. And then if those shifts do come from us, the honest to God truth is, is there's, there's three options. We can find efficiencies, we can maximize revenues, or we can consider cuts. And so I just, it's not sounding the alarm, it's not being an alarmist. It's, it's less concerning this year, although it's very concerning, it's more concerning in '26, '27, and '28. And so I just wanted to say that. That said, we had fantastic time at Minnewashda opening. It's the first time, I think, we've made a significant investment in that park in 20 years or so. And it was fantastic. Commissioner Workman was there, Commissioner Anderson was there. I know our entire board has been participant in supporting that, that project. And it was a cold day, yet hundreds of people showed up. I can only imagine how tight the parking would have been had it been a nice 70-degree day. And so congratulations to you and your team, Marty, you guys have put in a lot of work. And it's a significant investment by our taxpayers, $1.2 million spent on it. Hadn't been updated, I think, in 25 or so years, 20, 25 or 30. So it's a huge community asset. And Commissioner Workman spoke, there was a gal there from Wisconsin, I think has been there multiple times. I know other people have used this, this is not ours, this is a regional gem for a lot of people to be part of. I had a chance to take part in Paige Becker's day, I don't think anybody follows women's basketball, but she came out of Hopkins and she had her first WNBA game last week. And in Hopkins, they renamed the town Paige Becker's Minnesota for a day. I just thought that was cool, the spirit of the mayor that was leading that charge. And we had a chance to be part of it, girls loved it. So Paige Becker's, it's, it's a real deal, they did change the name. The Lynx won that game, yes, they did. Next one is, it's rare when we have a staff member that reaches 30-plus years of service. We sent Reid off in style, Reid Ashpool has led our jail for 32 years. And so he retired on Friday. And so it was great to see a lot of the people from his past and current. And then also there was a little bit of social, I see Frisman's in the room, himself and myself were there. And just a lot of people from the community. He's a unique individual that's added a lot of value. And probably one of the things I'd elevate, two of the things I'd elevate about Reid. One, we get to high rates on that jail regularly. And it seems apropos that, that the Stillwater jail was, or prison was, was announced to be closing in the next handful of years. Because there are, I think, $180 million of deferred maintenance. And I think if they replaced it, it'd be $1.3 billion. It's a different scale, but I don't think we worry about that jail having to be reconstructed in the next 20 years. Largely because of a lot of the investment the board has made, the taxpayers have made, and that Reid has led. And then the second thing about Reid, there wasn't a single conversation or lunch I ever had with Reid where he didn't mention his wife or his kids. And so, real clear on his why, as to why he did what he did for all those years. So thank you Reid and your family for putting up with a lot of, a lot of stuff. Pre-K open house last week, had the chance to park a bunch of cars, I think there was over 150 families that came out. And these are people that are making an investment in our community. And they'll be the future leaders in our community and see their faces and how engaged they are on that day. I don't know what our enrollment numbers are gonna be locally, but it sure was fun to see the spirit of those young families coming out. AMC Day at the Capitol was last week for commissioners. And I did get a chance to speak to and see a lot of our peers. We're having the same conversations that I met earlier, met with a number of lawmakers and a number of peers. I think the most value was the, the number of peers that we spoke to that they're facing some things similar. We all had these conversations in the different boards that we're on, but what are you doing different? What are you doing better? What, how are you approaching this? And so that was worth it. Couple hours later, Commissioner Anderson and myself had a chance to attend the Melso meeting, which is a regional library board, 103 libraries roll up to that. We're having similar conversations at the library level too. What happens when the funding doesn't necessarily match the need or the expenditures or the wants? Taste of Chaska was a great event last week as well. I think Steve said that thousands of people came out to that, new vendors, existing vendors. A lot of time and effort in a beautiful day. Hennepin Carver Workforce Board was last week, we were at La Luna, local 5863 Union Training Hall Center. I think Commissioner Anderson joined remote on that one as well. Commissioner Workman often says a job is probably the best plan that we have. And so we are doing work behind the scenes and above the, above board to, to address employment and get people working and getting livable wages. I had a chance to meet with about a half a dozen not-for-profits and civic organizations and faith organizations just in the last week, just to name a few. SVA, Humanity Alliance, Love Inc., Gather and Grow, Bountiful Basket, A Better Societal Society. Asking them, if shifts come our way, where do we shift? And I think oftentimes the front door of a church or a not-for-profit or a civic organization, that's where the shift happens. Because they see those folks first and oftentimes efficiently serve them. And I think sometimes we don't elevate them enough. But one particular organization that we as a board have been funding to the tune of about $20,000 for the last four or five years. That's actually not worth $20,000 in five money, year, money five years ago. And so I said, what happens if this happens and that happens? And we never really know how close they are to closing, but this particular organization, if you look at it numerically, would be the equivalent of about three to four employees if we had to, if we had to do the work that they do on behalf of Carver County. And then finally, my kids got a chance to go to the library, they have a seed library. So if you haven't planted for your spring, they have seed library. So you can go grab seeds to plant in your own home. And there's no cost to that. And that was funded by the generosity of the Charles Dahlke grant through a foundation, more or less, that created, a guy passed away. He was, he was very fond of our libraries and he contributed a million dollars of his estate. And that's helped fund some of these programs. And again, that's another area where we press to be like, if we want to do some extra things or maybe not so extra things, just do some things. The money of philanthropy and doing things as a community stretches, we can see that in the seed library. So those are my comments, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'll be shorter. Thanks for mentioning, thank you, Commissioner Urdeman for mentioning the things we went, shared too. I do want to add, Chair Workman and I were able to attend the foster care parent appreciation banquet. What a fabulous event that was. It was so moving to see people who have, and I forget their names, Bernie and Bonnie.
Stockman.
Stockman, yes, who have been foster care parents in this community for 50 years. And to hear the stories from social workers and from some of those foster kids, the lives they changed. It was, it was truly moving. You see a lot of bad press about foster families in the media and on TV. And that, that was not what, what Commissioner Workman and I witnessed. So thank you Heather for inviting us. Thanks Clint and his entire staff for, for putting that together. I think our HHS is, is truly full of unsung heroes in this community. And, and our foster care parents are definitely some of them. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I, we did lose a veteran up in Chanhassen, longtime veteran. I went to high school with his son Conrad, Connie Winkle. He would have been, he would have been in, standing in the color guard on Memorial Day last year. And he won't be this year. And early 90s, somewhere in his 90s, and a great guy, great people, great family, who I know my, most of my life. Thank you Commissioner Urdeman for bringing up the state shifts. You're too polite, probably. Taxpayers of Carver County are headed for a lot of unhappiness, I think. I think if we can just shift all of our problems over to the ditch pairs. Cause I see there must be at least two of them in the room and now they crooked up, which we cannot do. But it is, the legislature finished yesterday, last night, well, they didn't finish. They, let's face it, they, they punted for another week or three, probably. I have, apparently have a steak sandwich bet with Commissioner Urdeman about when they'll get done. I said they get done before June 30th or by June 30th. And to get that sandwich, I think he's twisted my words. But Minnewashda Park, you know, I thought, wow, one, about $1.2 million playground, which growing up, many of us here, I think I said, you know, you don't even need to get a tetanus shot to play on any of this stuff. But when I saw it, it was, it's gotta be the best playground we have in the county, right?
Sure.
Unbelievable space. Urdeman children running around. But I was too shocked at how many people were there on such a not-good day. And so people want to do things and they want to enjoy Carver County, Minnewashda is a beautiful park and proud it's in District 2. At the, at the foster parent dinner, I'll echo Commissioner Anderson. I got to see old friends Bob and Sue Downs, who have been at this game also. Most Chaska High School graduates would know that name, Bob Downs.
Voice of the Hawks.
Voice of the Hawks and teacher and everything else, when I was, of course, there, I was there. But great to see them, they're kind of the emergency foster care family, right? So, and somebody needs somebody right away. So what a, what a glorious night and to talk about all the good things that those people are doing. So that's all I got. All right, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Urdeman for the consent agenda, any discussion? It's a big consent agenda, thank you for putting stuff on there. Seeing no other discussion, any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item 3.1, Coney Island Interpretive Plan Project Update.
Oh, good morning. Mr. Chair member, Sam Perz, Parks and Trail Supervisor, thanks for some time this morning, nice to be with you. A brief update. There we go. A brief update for you on some long-range planning we're doing for Coney Island in respects to interpretive opportunities. A bit of an agenda we'll go through here, and I'm gonna pause on this first slide, you know, a bit of an oversight. I should be pointing out, and I'm going to, that consistent with our long-range plan for Coney Island, Lake Wakona Regional Park, this interpretive plan kind of tucks underneath that. So if you go back to 2016, when we updated the long-range plan for Lake Wakona Regional Park, which included, the part of that emphasis at that time was to include Coney Island into the regional system as a, as a function of Lake Wakona Regional Park. That planning effort brought forward an interest by the public to have interpretive opportunities. So this next round of work that we're going through now is consistent with that. And so we gathered some stakeholders here, early March. You can see that list of mostly community groups to the Wakona area. Other key, key stakeholders that were identified, of course, our archaeologists, the county's gone through about, you know, five major studies of archaeology to this point here, since, since the county has, you know, taken ownership and operating the island. And a lot of that information's coming forward here in our interpretive plan and will, will continue to do so. American Indian community, we tried to, I'll say gather, would be considered a Dakota Advisory Council. And I could share more on that, but that was a bit of a struggle with not having relationships there. As a part of the requirement of the grant, that was, that was a requirement. So we did do good work to try to make connections there through an individual with the liaison to the Hokataki organization, which is a branch of the Minnewakaton tribe or a component of the Minnewakinta tribe down in Shakopee. And that really wasn't all that fruitful, but nevertheless made good, good efforts to try to, to try to bring that voice to the table. Of course, our park commission had representation there, the Mace family, the Wakona Chamber. So our list of stakeholders, and I think we had pretty good participation there in March. Folks came out and, and shared a number of different, you know, engagement questions and ways that we wanted to learn from these stakeholders. How they see interpretive opportunities on the island as we go forward. Some of the key elements, and I'll pause here again, so again, like other long-range planning, think of this at 30,000 foot or maybe even higher. Doesn't get to the, I'll say to the Nats ass of what's, what's the story? It's what are the themes, what are those, where are those themes represented on the site? And so the four themes that are identified at this point are really, again, indigenous use or Dakota crossroads. Community gathering, again, archaeology and history, you know, shows that the site was used for community events, for community gathering back in the resort era and the heyday of, of kind of use of the island. Labor and leisure, you think of, you know, folks like Amblard, that again was operating resorts and cabins and, and villas and, and, you know, offering leisure opportunity for folks, but also an opportunity for, for employment. And then island ecology is kind of another core theme. You think of again, the example maybe being the rookery and, and other natural resource opportunity that's out there. Whether it's the 100-plus-year-old sugar maples, the wild leaf that we continue to see on the island that, you know, we continue to scratch our heads and say, how is there a population of red fox on the island? So ecology to the site is, is another strong theme. Geographically on the island, you know, how those themes might be represented in certain areas of the island. And again, I, I think the clear example there, as a consultant's kind of putting this together for us, you know, that Area 4 island ecology, again, that's right where the rookery at, at a past date was, was known to be. And so you can see again how these interpretive, you know, opportunities might come, you know, come to fruition on the island itself as people use the site. I'll point out too, that at some point in a later date, we see a relationship between Wakona mainland and the island. You know, in terms, in terms of interpretive, you know, kind of comprehensive opportunity. Whether it be something that's, you know, ice harvesting and Yellowstone Trail is examples of known history that impacted the mainland. There's a relationship between there and the island in terms of how we might be offering interpretive opportunities as a whole from, from Wakona Regional Park. So the plan gets us to really to concept in terms of what, you know, what users might see. Did I skip a slide there? I did. In terms of what, what can you actually engage with? You know, signage is, I think, the easy one that most people think of and certainly signage is on the list of considerations. But you can, you could do signage in so many different ways, you know, whether using artifacts and, and materials to represent old artifacts that people can tactically touch and feel and engage with. You know, AI and, and technologies come so far where you might be able to do signage that shows a rendering of how, you know, how that site was used in different ways, whether it's a cabin or what other past structures that were, you know, shown on the site at a, at a past date. You know, it's maybe as far as sound posts or ways that people can, you know, participate in things, you know, from an audio perspective that might, again, be tied to the ecology of the site. Maybe it's just a, a story that was told by someone in past, I'm trying to think of the word here. A, you know, you know, audio history of, of a past story that was significant to the site. And that's being played through, through the sound post. Technology, whether it's through an interactive map. And another slide here, or another op, excuse me, another example in the, in the plan would be using the sunroom for potentially a place where people could come back and use the technology in the room through a program experience that might give them more of a comprehensive, like you'd see at maybe a museum or other historical sites where you could participate in, in more of a comprehensive, you know, experience of, of what was on the island from a culture and historical perspective. So project schedule and milestones here up in front of us, we're at the 50%. You know, draft status, now we're receiving comments from that stakeholder group and making sure that those comments are being factored in as we move to 90%. We have a deadline to submit this back to the state historic preservation office by the end of June. I'll point out there too, that the grant dollars are really what has led us to being able to proceed with this plan. The county received about, just shy of $49,000 for this project, which is, you know, the, the majority share of the cost of this, this planning work. And then after June, we'll receive comments from the state, add those to the, to the plan and then move those into final, final plan. Looking to come back here in August into the county board for authorization and adopting the plan moving forward. The final plan will include, which is not part of today, will include some cost estimating for those interpretive opportunities as a menu so that we can continue to program actual installation of, of opportunities. Sorry, it's jumping on me here. So following opportunities here, there's some, some key ones right in front of us, you know, grant funding here with, with the state. There's another large grant cycle coming due in July, pre-application. That times out fairly well with the completion of this plan. Final application will be due in September. Again, we were successful with this round of work and the way the state likes to work, the historical society likes to work is in steps. And so would feel, I think, a little confident that we'd have the ability to go out and be successful with another, another grant application. Those dollars would be awarded in '26. We did receive money from the board here in Schedule E as part of '25's budget. 50, 50K was, was put in the parks budget for what I'd say is design implementation. What can we get in the field so that people can actually start participating in interpretive opportunities on the site? And with that, I'll pause for questions, just a brief update.
Any questions? Commissioner Urdeman?
Thank you. There's so many things that you do. You know, you're opening a park one day and now we're talking about interpretive Coney Island another day. And programming I know is on the horizon, Micah was passionate about that the other day. I appreciate your comments about the native population. That was an area that I was not educated on and I had to become very educated on a number of years ago. So I appreciate the reach out, it's a very challenging space, so thanks for your time on that one. I think largely we've ruled out commerce on Coney Island, at least for the short term. I know before it was like a hotel and I'd heard at one point a Hilton property was trying to buy it or get on it and that motivated the guy that eventually bought it and donated it and so on and so forth. So I speak in the context of, I think that making that a, you know, destination place for commerce or partnering with the private market probably isn't something in the, in the horizon when we talk about these things. But I also think that elevating the history and the uniqueness of this, it comes with its challenges. I'd say the people I talked to, roughly half say, why are we spending any money on this? The other half are like, let's go make this thing possible. It's a challenge to get there, law enforcement to get there, if we have a lot of people, there's a lot of complications. And I appreciate your navigating those things. Do you know how many annual visits we get there a year at Coney Island?
No, it's not parsed out, not parsed out aside from Wakona as a whole. And so, but to that question, Wakona Regional Park was just over 400,000 users in '24, so that's 24 data. Just ahead of that was Lake Minnewashda Regional Park, that our use estimates as a system were 1.8 million in '24. So that's about up another 200,000 from '23. But Coney Island specifically, no, I, I could try to drill into that. It becomes complicated, it's a five-year average, I think you've heard Marty and I talk about how those use estimates are calculated at that council. Sort of parse out a specific park gets a little bit challenging, but I could follow up with you on that.
Do you know, just an estimate ballpark, how much in aggregate we've spent on studies of, of the island? I mean, is it?
Well, I'll tell you this, it's a fair amount of money.
Are we talking north of 100,000?
Yes.
So I, I'm just gonna make this suggestion, and I don't know if it sits in your domain, you know, it's a lot of, it's not your lane, it's your lane. Maybe it's your lane or it's not your lane, but if we're spending a million or 100,000, 200,000, whatever dollars, I'd just like to throw this out there. It's, right now it's more or less a private island. If you have a boat to get there, you can get there, with very few exceptions. I'd like there to be four times a year where anybody of all means can get out there. Whether we pay for a pontoon or we schedule, I don't know. I'd like us to do that. I'd like it to be a public island, not a private island. And then I'd also like us to potentially consider that, given the exorbitant amount of money we've spent on studies upon studies and government does this very well, and it's not your fault, right? To get the money, you gotta study it, do the study, you got the thing and da-da-da-da-da. But what would it look like if we carved out $5,000 or $6,000 to have somebody that does this? Create a children's book to talk about the history of the island? And what if every sixth grader in Carver County had a chance to have that book? Whether they get to step foot on that island or not? It would be a minimal expense, it would be high impact. And I think we've got about 1,500 sixth graders across Carver County. It would be very minimal cost. And I just put that in context, it'd be less than probably 1% or 2% of what we've spent on studies to have true impact. And so maybe that's a partnership with the library, maybe that's a partnership with the historic society, maybe that's a partnership with somebody else. And I don't do it just to have some silly, you know, thing that Urdeman conjured up. I do it to say that in 10 years, we could spend another couple hundred thousand dollars on studies and really not truly pass that along to the next generation. And think about it, in the course of 10 years, we could have 15,000 sixth graders know about that island. And that would reap way far better benefit, in my opinion, than the next study that we're required to do. And so I just offer that as a comment to put in your head.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Urdeman, yeah, that, great comments, points well taken. I will, I will add a couple more in to the conversation that, as Matt said at the end there, we are required. And we all, I think we all know this, but we are required through the way this, the site is listed in the National Historic Registry of Places. Archaeology is part of what we've done and it's part of where we're going regardless. So again, we put the monument in in recognition of the Hoffman family and foundation last year, that triggered archaeology. So Matt's comments are, are spot on, I struggle a little bit again with what we've been required to do. If it was my sole decision, I think the 50K that was awarded through this year's budget would be for things on the ground. What could people, what could people actually engage with rather than more planning? And that's how, you know, there will be some, needs to be some design services there again, to pick out the story and design them in a way that whatever tool we go forward with, there will be some costs that's associated to the actual designing. But how can we get that to be things in the ground that people can engage with? The comment on the, on the ferry service is also well taken. I actually talked with the Maces yesterday, who's one of our stakeholders, Jimmy and Ben, and, and their family. And I asked them again, are you interested? That's where we first started with the ferry concept, are you interested with partnership with Intom Marina? And they just weren't interested at that time. It doesn't sound like they're any more interested, but that nut continues to be a hard one to crack.
Well, they're for profit too. Like if we carved out money and said four times a year, these are the dates, sign up. And you cap it, start at 100, 100 times four times, that's 400 people, it probably costs us less than five grand. To make it accessible, the people that don't have a $50,000 boat, you know, don't live on the lake. It's our island, it's not, you know, a private island. And so again, is it our job, is it not our job? I don't, I don't know that anybody else has cracked that code. So can we budget for four times a year, once a month for the summer and get more kids and families out there to see it? And, and I will say that there's a, a number of people that are affluent and tied to the historic society, tied to Coney Island. One that, name that comes to mind is Melkert. You know, I, I don't think that it would be hard to fundraise if we needed to get these things off the ground as well. Again, impact, look out 10 years. Do we have more kids, do we have more families that have experienced this? Or do we just have, have more studies and surveys? And I'm not, again, this isn't at you, this is, I understand the nature of the beast. And so I just, if we can unlock maybe 10% of what we spend on the studies for, for actually benefit or more, for benefit to school children and families. So that's where I'd like to see us go.
Well, maybe Commissioner Urdeman wasn't in the legislative meeting this morning talking about cuts, cause he's talking about spending money. But not a lot, but you know, by its very nature, it's an island. And I'm very attracted to islands. I honeymooned in Key West. And it's expensive and it's hard to get to an island. Madeline Island is on our calendar this year. And we'll have to get our '74 Chevette onto the ferry and drive out there. It's, and it's expensive out there and you gotta pay It's, and it's expensive out there and you got to pay a ferry to get out there and it's hard. So that, I would love to, I pop into Waconia Regional Park when I'm in the area and look around, I go, God, I wish I could go out to that island. That's the beauty of it is that it's an island. I know you, I think Sam, your department has a kayak trip going out there. I don't know if I signed up or I thought about signing up, but is that in June?
We do multiple, yep. So again, points well taken. We hear it in full transparency, we hear it from time to time from our park users, how the heck do I get out there? So we know it's, it's a barrier. We understand it's a, right now it's a gap in our services. Our rental program that's there through Paradise Commons, of course, that's a way. It doesn't mean that if you're not an able-bodied person that you can get in a canoe and go. We offer through our programming, as Commissioner Workman's saying, multiple times a year do we, we offer a Coney Island kayak or paddle. That ties in, interpretive, very brief interpretive, you know, my staff aren't historians, but they offer a bit of the history and then they get them to Coney Island in a paddle experience and that's been a pretty successful package over the last few years. So we do multiple of those. But again, that leaves out people that can't get in a canoe or a kayak, understanding that point, yep.
Mr. Metz.
Has, have you presented at the county fair before or like had a poster board? Because that's a real affordable way and it educates people and you have all those people. Because you know, the county attorney's office sometimes has a booth and we're trying to educate and I was just thinking that would be really interesting, even if, you don't have to have it staff necessarily, if you had two really nice poster boards and had this, people are really intrigued by that and then you might touch people that go, wow, I didn't even know this existed, but it's great out there. They've done a great job and my family goes out there, just, you can grill on the island, you can just go swim a little bit, you can walk around the island, so it really is a nice gem that Carver County has and invested a lot and is just really neat to kind of, you know, park your boat and, and go and walk around, enjoy it. So thanks for what they've done on that and the board for investing in that and the Hoffman family, from my perspective.
Thank you, Norm Hoffman. All right, any other questions?
Not a question, just a statement. It's, it's not a private island and that was, Mr. Hoffman was mentioned, he was, he wanted the island for Joe Sixpack was his quote. And he wanted it for anyone with a family to get out there and you can get out there in the canoe, you can borrow a boat, you can rent a boat, you can get out there in any different avenue. And one of the major surprises for me is how many people use it during the winter, where they load up on a, and walk across the ice and, and get out and they grill with their family on the island during the winter. And to the point where on a Saturday morning, you better get there early because there's only so many grills and there's only so many picnic tables, otherwise it's going to be taken over and that's on an island. So it's really well used. So it's not a private island, it's Carver County's island, use it whenever you can.
And just one other.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you so much for what you do in the Parks Department, so I appreciate that. I do want to echo Commissioner Udoman's comment about, you know, getting more access to that. I, I admit, I've never been to Coney Island, I need to get out there and I'm curious, you piqued my curiosity on some of the artifacts and using that as an educational purposes. So I, I'm not here to, to figure out though how. You guys can, can figure out the how, but I do like the idea of kind of getting more access and, and adding more kayaks. I am an avid kayaker, so have to look into, to that program. I probably missed the boat, literally missed the boat on the signup for the kayaks, but, but that's okay. And, and again, hats off to Marty and Sam for all you do for our Parks Department, so you make us shine. Thanks for that.
And one more, are the docks in?
Well, I was going to mention that in terms of access, right, you still got to get to them, but the docks are on site. We did add a dock to Coney Island this year, so there's more access, right? Which as we understand, all are saying and understanding, that's, that's the key to getting it out there and enjoying it, yep.
And, and where's the new dock?
There's one on both south shorelines now, the west side where it's been since opening and now on the east, east side, shoreline, yep. Well, we'll be back with you then in August, is the plan, Mr. Chair and members. Appreciate your time.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Marty. All right. I have 3.2, county ordinance to limit the number of cannabis retail registrations. I am going to read a quick statement here. The board chair would like to make a point of order. The language in the limited number of cannabis retail registrations ordinance previously came before this board for enactment on November 19th, 2024. Sometime after that meeting, it was discovered that adoption of the ordinance on November 19, 2024 was mistakenly presented for board adoption without first publishing a notice of the intent to enact the ordinance in the official newspaper as required by law. The ordinance was voted on and unanimously passed by the board on November 19, 2024 is therefore null and void. Notice of the limited number of cannabis retail registration, registrations ordinance that is before you today was properly published in the official newspaper for the required 10 days. Do I have a motion to adopt the limited number of cannabis retail registrations ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynch and a second by Anderson. Any discussion? Any explanation by staff? It's pretty self-explanatory. Anybody in the audience got a concern about it? I see none.
I thought that's why they were all here.
And we have posted that now, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. All right, so seeing no other discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes again. Thank you, staff. Okay, we're going to go into a closed session. So I need a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute 113D.05 subdivision 3C2 to review confidential or protected, protected non-public appraisal data under Minnesota statute 13.44 subdivision 3 and pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C1 to determine the price for the sale of a permanent transportation easement on CCRA, Carver County Railroad Association-owned real estate property, which is located in Chaska, Minnesota and extends over a portion of parcel identified by tax ID number 30.9990600 lying northeast of First Street West and all of the parcel identified by property tax ID number 30.9990500, which is the CCRA property.
Mr. Chair, may I have a moment? Actually, with the amendment to 2.11 this morning, that data was reclassified as public. At the time the materials were submitted to the board, it was protected, but now that data is now public data by virtue of the majority vote of the board this morning. So we can eliminate the closed session and go directly into the open session for the Carver County Regional Rail Authority.
So Ms. Shimshack, I read that for nothing.
I apologize, I did.
Is there any chance?
Quickly enough.
I read it poorly for nothing?
Is there any chance you could repeat that?
Yeah, could you? I missed some of it.
Okay, good. I'd rather have everything in the open, so thank you very much. Next time, interrupt me. Mr. Walsh.
I'm going to need a little help from our technical crew in the back to pull up our PowerPoint. Well, let me start with.
Time out. Mr. Chair, do we need a recess on the regional rail, however?
Yeah.
Well, that's Commissioner Lynch's.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recess our regular session and go to a regular, the Regional Rail Authority.
Okay, that's a motion by Lynch and a second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, we are the Carver County Regional Rail Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. I'm going to take a, kind of a big step back and talk about just briefly the Union Pacific Railroad Corridor, which runs from Chaska, as you know, and have seen some work out there in that corridor, construct a trail all the way over to Carver. And then eventually that UP corridor crosses the Minnesota River into Scott County, where there's a very, another very large project, the Marion Junction Regional Trail, Trail Project. So back about 2013, Carver County, Scott County got together and acquired that railroad corridor. So that's just some brief history about, I'll say, our initial acquisition of the corridor. In about 20, I think it was 14, 15, we did pave a portion of that trail corridor from Athletic Park to Carver, so there's an existing trail on that. And then as I've mentioned now in terms of the current project, and we'll talk more about this in a little bit, Chaska has led a project to construct a trail from essentially Athletic Park on the old railroad corridor, all the way over to the East Creek diversion channel. So that's just some brief, brief history about the railroad corridor. So about a year ago, we were here talking about a permanent transportation easement over the corridor for Chaska to construct, construct this trail. Sorry that this is kind of a bit complicated in that you are both the Regional Rail Authority, which owns the property, and you are also the operator on parts of the corridor as the Carver County Board and a portion currently under construction. The Regional Rail Authority is operator of that, but we've transferred those responsibilities to Chaska while they are constructing the trail. So again, just a little bit of, I'll say background, I'll try to advance things here. So again, this diagram here kind of shows the, the current project area of where the trail is through Chaska, again, starting over at Athletic Park, the red dashed line and then leading all the way through town to the East Creek diversion channel. I'm trying to see if I can get the pointer to work here. But I think you can see it there in red. So going back again about a year ago, the board approved a joint powers agreement between the Carver County Regional Rail Authority, the county and the city of Chaska for construction, operation and maintenance and repair of the extension of what this project is called, the Circle the Brick Trail, onto CCRA-owned parcels and the county-owned parcel in Chaska. So the corridor where this trail project is, contains both property that the county owns and property that City of Chaska owned, as well as our Regional Rail Authority property. So there's three different parties that were involved. The next action. Did this skip all the way forward? Seems like we skipped a couple things here. One, two, three. The JPA Joint Powers Agreement was executed in 2024, again, about a year ago, which allowed the construction of the trail and the county, on the county parcels, perform any other activities that were reasonably related to the, necessary to the construction and then ongoing operations of the trail, maintenance and repair of the improvements with Chaska. So we have a joint powers agreement with Chaska for the operation of the trail. And that, that assigns maintenance, operation and repair costs obligations between all parties. So as we kind of go forward, the project will eventually, I'll say, conclude in terms of overall construction and then upon, I'll say, the completion of the construction of the project, we'll begin taking over some of the maintenance responsibilities for that and so will Chaska, have some maintenance responsibilities, particularly as it relates to what I'll say is some of the streetscaping elements that are a part of that corridor. So on July 20, last year, again, July 6th, 2024, the board authorizes CCRA to enter into a permanent transportation easement agreement. So the Carver County Regional Rail Authority will continue to own the property, but it is providing an easement, you know, for the trail to occur on Regional Rail Authority property. The Regional Rail Authority has other obligations in the corridor. There's a number of utility lines, crossings and so forth that still are in the corridor. And what the Regional Rail Authority has assigned to Carver County is that ability really to operate, maintain and construct a trail on CCRA property. So the permanent transportation easement agreement is subject to the existing, existing conditions of the corridor. We include the preservation of the corridor for future transportation use. So just a reminder that at some point in time, should it ever be decided that rail transportation be reestablished on the corridor, that is a potential. We don't know of any, I'll say, pending projects that would indicate that, but that is a potential. There are the existing utility agreements, which I mentioned, and licenses on the corridor property. We may use the corridor in the interim for a recreation trail and it assigns CCRA's operations, maintenance and repair obligations over to the county. So the appraisal took a look at the across the fence method for, I'll say, determining the value of these, these parcels. So, and that simply means if the property was next to residential, it was appraised as residential, if it's the next to commercial, it's appraised as commercial and so on. Next to, I'll say, open space, it was appraised as a similar, similar value. There are seven tracks of the property too, which are kind of showing here. And then as you kind of proceed through town, you can see the other tracks as it goes through the, the streets, all the way up to track number seven, which is near the end of the So this is some of the private data that was referenced as what's in the appraisal information here, and these are the values for those individual parcels. So phase one, phase one occurred last year and we applied for funding, park acquisition opportunity funding. And we received 75% of the value through the Metropolitan Council for grant, for grant. And that is matched, has been matched by the Regional Rail Authority's contribution of 25% of in-kind easement value. So the parcels two and seven had an appraised value of $2,135,500, a 75% value, 1.6 million. And then the in-kind contribution was a little over $500,000 that in terms of easement value that was contributed as the match to the park acquisition opportunity funds. So phase one is complete, we've submitted that application. I don't believe we've received the check yet for the 1.6 million, but we're close to getting that, it's just a matter of time before the check shows up.
It's in the mail.
It's in the mail. Phase two is what we're talking about today. And so that includes the other parcels, 1, 3, 4, 5 and 6, and the value there is 1.8 million. The county again can receive up to 75% of grant funding or about 1.3 million dollars for the easement value through the park acquisition opportunity fund of the Metropolitan Council. Now, we were a little, I want to say, rush is maybe not the right word, but I want to get ourselves in line so that we can receive the funding as timely as possible. The first acquisition in 2025, we're eligible for one cycle of funding for, in one state fiscal calendar year. The second calendar year begins July 1 and we want to get in line for our funding here in what would be the state fiscal year 2026. So the park acquisition opportunity fund dollars are available on a first come, first served basis. And I'm aware that there are other agencies that are moving forward with acquisitions. So again, hopefully trying to get ourselves in a good position to receive those, receive the funds. So again, the, what the value is, is indicated there, what the county may receive in terms of park acquisition opportunity funds at 1.3 and then the in-kind contribution in terms of the easement value of just under 500,000 for the easement. So the documents that are needed here and what helps me complete the grant application is actually the signed stipulation settlement agreement between the Carver County Regional Rail Authority and Carver County for parcels 1, 3, 4, 5 and 6. We would move forward again with a permanent transportation easement agreement between the Regional Rail Authority and Carver County and that gets recorded. And then we go on to complete our joint powers agreement here, assign the operations and maintenance and repair and obligations of those parcels over to the county, from the Regional Rail Authority over to the county. So the requested actions here again are to approve the stipulation for settlement agreement between Carver County Regional Rail Authority and the county for setting the terms, conditions and costs of CCRA's conveyance of the permanent transportation easement over the parcels 1, 3, 4, 5 and 6 to the county. Approve a permanent transportation easement agreement between the Regional Rail Authority and the county for CCRA's conveyance over those parcels. And again, as I mentioned with regards to, we'd be eligible for 75% of the value of those corridors through the park acquisition opportunity fund for the permanent transportation easement agreement. permanent transportation easement agreement, and then approve the joint powers agreement between Carver County Regional Rail Authority and the county for the transfer of CCRRA's operations, maintenance, and repair obligations on those parcels. And so I believe with that, Mr. Chair, a couple more actions here. Again, allow the county to apply for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six park acquisition opportunity grant from the Metropolitan Council for the county's acquisition costs related to those parcels, going one, three, four, five, and six, and then allow Carver County to make an in-kind donation of twenty-five percent of the fair market value of the park, of the PTE, again, over those same parcels, provided, provided we receive the funding from the Metropolitan Council at seventy-five percent of our, of our acquisition costs. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I would stand for questions.
Any questions? Richard Lynch.
We had this last time, and I asked the same question of you and Mary. Could you make it any more complicated?
Right. Thank you.
We tried.
Let me try and simplify it. I'm a little skittish about Met Council paying for things they commit to. Is this lock tight that if, that we'll get Met Council dollars to what we want them to be, or will we be stuck holding the bag at some point?
Again, we have been applying at increments that are within the funding constraints of the Metropolitan Council, and so we're eligible at the one point seven million in terms of initial park acquisition opportunity funds. The count currently has funds in it that would allow us to, I'll say, claim those funds. There are others that are stepping in line, and so we are trying to, I'll say, get, get ahead of the, of the others in here so that the fund, funding source, if you will, the bank account has the dollars to go forward. Should, should there not be enough funds to go forward with a full acquisition, then we would probably break the parcels again into smaller segments, or wait till the next funding cycle and reapply again.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
The controlling factors, but this is contingent, the conveyance of the permanent transportation easement is contingent on getting the funding.
That's helpful. That's helpful. Thanks, Mary.
So if we don't get the funding this term, we can reexamine the documents, and as Marty said, break them down in a different fashion, get any funding that is available. The goal is to maximize the county's receipt of funding, and one of the other drivers of this transaction is the fact that the county is the only entity that's eligible to receive the Met Council funding. The Regional Rail Authority is not an eligible entity for that purpose. So the conveyance had to occur from the Regional Rail Authority to the county to make the county eligible, and secondly, it was always the intent that the county would be absorbing the maintenance responsibilities of the trail anyway. So it's, it's a reasonable outcome to have the transportation easement granting the property rights and then the JP granting the obligations.
That's helpful. Hey, Colin, does that thing above her head pick up her voice?
Yeah. You should come up to the podium.
You want me to repeat that?
No.
No, you're good. No, but I think that's a good answer, because I think for the thousands that are watching currently, us here on, on, at this meeting, why we had to do it. Well said, so. I'm assuming on page seventy-eight are those four actions, and we're not going to read them. Marty did a good job of reading those, Mr. County Attorney. So if we could do one lump motion.
I would move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Lynch and a second by Uterman. Further discussion, not sure what we'd ask, but seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Marty. Good job.
Wasn't so complicated when we gave Mary the chance to speak.
All right, Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to recess as the Regional Rail Authority and convene as the Carver County Ditch Authority.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch just made that motion for us to recess as the Regional Rail Authority and convene as the County Ditch Authority, and Anderson has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Item six point one, continuation of a February fourth redetermination of benefits, public hearing for County Ditch two, three.
John, do you need an official name tag?
I do not.
Good morning.
Don't worry, Mr. Chair. Yeah, yeah. Is it better off getting paid as a county attorney, or?
Probably not.
No.
Yeah, I think no.
Good morning. It's raining out. We need ditches today?
I think so. Probably don't have enough today, Mr. Chair. I was just thinking about that was the thing here. I didn't hear it this morning.
All right, Mr. Colb, are you the?
I can get us started, Mr. Chair, if that's okay. So again, I'd just like to say thank you to the board for inviting us down today for the continued hearing. My name is John Colb. I'm an attorney from Rinkie Noonan in St. Cloud, Minnesota, and the board has engaged me specifically on their public drainage issues. So again, thank you, Mr. Metz. I won't be taking a portion of your salary today, but I do appreciate you letting me sit here while we get through this hearing. This is, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, a continued hearing. As you know, we originally met in February, and at that hearing, there were many comments and concerns expressed by the public that were in attendance. There were also some discoveries we made about some township ditches that were within the watershed area of ditch two dash three, and based on all of that, the board chose to continue the hearing to today's date and gave some specific instruction to the viewers to reexamine certain portions of the watershed area of ditch two dash three, to give special consideration and investigate some of the situation or the conditions related to the township ditches, and then also to look at certain specific properties and land uses within the city of Waconia, the schools, and there was a, a specific landowner that was asked to be looked at as well, based on the, the certain flooding that occurs on that individual's property. And the viewers will get into the details of their examination of all of those things. I will say, though, that a part of their examination, the viewers did discover that there are actually four township ditches within the watershed area of ditch two dash three. They did inquire of the townships. The townships believe these are all active ditches, so the townships believe that they are their infrastructure to take care of in terms of maintenance. And the viewers also investigated at the county auditor's office and at the townships to see whether there were specific benefits rolls for these drainage systems, the township ditches. Discovering none, the viewers did go through a process of delineating the watershed areas of the township ditches, and from that delineation, using, with assistance of the county, developed a mailing list of all of the owners of properties within those areas so that we could give them a separate notice, in addition to notice to the townships, that there would be an outlet charge consideration rather than a direct benefit inclusion in two dash three. And we do that because we don't want to double assess people. If somebody's getting assessed on two dash three and they're in two dash three, they're going to get an assessment, but if they're also in a township ditch, they might get assessed for the township ditch also. So what we do on outletting systems, and the viewers will explain this, is we identify the properties that utilize the system that outlets to the main system and utilizes the main system as an outlet for drainage, and then they apply certain considerations to the development of an outlet charge for that area. So the end result is, if the board were to adopt the current viewer's recommendation, when a dollar gets spent on, on CD two dash three, a portion of that dollar gets allocated to each of the four township ditches according to what percentage of total benefits each of those township ditches has and what type of burden it places on the main system. In that regard, then, we're not double assessing people both for, at the same level and same rate as we would if, so if they were included just on two dash three and then supplementary on the, on the township ditches, we just catch them once and at a lesser rate. That is reflective of the burden that those outletting ditches place on ditch two dash three. The viewers will, will discuss that. The board did close the public comment hearing in February. However, because of this new configuration of benefits, we were required to provide new notices, so we gave the new notices out. So today, the board should open a public comment period. That public comment period can be limited to the outlet charge discussion rather than benefits, because everyone that, you know, had an original benefit consideration had an opportunity at the prior hearing, and of course, Mr. Chair and members of the board, the board always has the discretion to open up for greater public comment. And I will note for the record also that at the last hearing, Commissioner Fahy recused himself because he does have property on ditch two dash three, and I've offered the opinion that that is not a direct conflict of interest. He's under no legal obligation to recuse himself, but he is able to exercise his own discretion and, and decide how he wants to participate in the hearing today. So I'm not calling him out, but I'm just highlighting that because that may become part of the discussion today as well.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions of me before we?
No, are you done?
I am. Thank you.
I felt like I was cutting you off. Thanks for the comment, open government, and Commissioner Fahy, you can decide what you want to do. Anybody got any discussion? Are we going to open it up here?
I believe you are required to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So today, after you let me talk and I'll never stop, so thank you for cutting me off. I'll be followed by the, we, we have provided all of the notices, the additional notices required for the hearing today. Those went out, I believe, mid last week, on the fourteenth, and again, those went out to the owners of property affected by these outlet charges on the township ditches and then to the townships themselves. We are going to hear the viewers' report on reexamination today, and then following the viewers' report on reexamination would be the appropriate time to take any public comment. We do have a draft of findings in an order that I can review with the board today if the board chooses to take action today. If not, you could certainly continue this to a next regular meeting, appropriate time in the board's agenda for the sole purpose of considering the findings, a draft of findings in an order in the matter, and then I'll defer to whatever guidance the board gives me following the receipt of any public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, the viewers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I use this to scroll?
Yes.
Here we are. My name is, again, for, for you guys, my name is Scott Henderson, lead viewer on doing the redetermination of benefits here on CD two, three. So here were the, the six things that during the original final hearing, we were asked to, to look at. We were asked to reexamine some of the benefits portion in the watershed areas of sections twenty and twenty-one in Lake Town Township, the city of Waconia storm water, storm water discharges, including, I think it's the Waconia School District, a Mr. Neeson's property down on Carver Creek, look at the time travel issues for remote areas of the watershed, the possibility of a fifth land class with benefits, could that be justified, and then, like Mr. Colb has said, the township ditches. So I'm just going to scroll through these six points, kind of one by one. So reexamination of the benefits in Lake Town Township. We did look at those lands again and found them to be reasonable within their classes three and, and four, with those similar lands within the entire watershed. For, for us to do our job, we have to look at those lands, similar lands similarly, and, and assess them and, and give them benefits. And so for us, those lands and those townships didn't trigger us to make any difference. If we would have made a difference there, we would have had to reexamine all those liked areas within the entire watershed and, and make changes. At the end of the day, the percentages probably wouldn't have shifted very much because, again, we're changing a lot of acres in that class three and class four area, and so the benefits might have changed, but then that percentage that people, oh, would have been so small. As John tends to say, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze for doing that work. But with those areas within Lake Town Township and, and sections twenty-one and, and twenty, but also including, here you can see seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-two, all those areas do drain to Reach Lake. And Reach Lake, we did do a lake attenuation on that lake, so how much water is retained during a, a two-year, five-year, ten-year, twenty-four-hour event, and we reduced the benefits to those lands draining to Reach Lake by six point three percent. For the city of Waconia discharges, including the school, spoke with the city of Waconia staff, they gave us quite a bit of information on the discharges and, and where their storm sewer inlets, outlets, pipes are, are all located at. The city of Waconia is already included within the benefited area, and that's based on urban benefits, urban drainage and agricultural benefits, because there are some ag acres within the city of Waconia's limits. Schools included in that benefited area, and since the school, since the city is all included in that area and have benefits, there was nothing extra for us to, to look at. I would say probably, originally, since we're still working with the original benefits, which was about eight hundred acres, this area wouldn't have been in, is not currently in the benefited area of the ditch system, but now with that benefited area expanding as much as it is, a lot of that, I think, in the entire city is now included within the benefited area. They will be paying a, close to a ten percent, nine point three seven percent of benefit assessment. So again, for every dollar spent, nine cents is coming from, from the city. So there was no need for us to change anything or, or increase their benefits. Within our process, they were already captured and, and looked at and benefited. Mr. Neeson's property, when he spoke, he said it has about twenty acres that are flooded. When we looked at it, the viewers designated over twenty-four acres as non-benefited, taking into account those acres that have not been and, and kind of continue to, to not be altered from a pre-settlement condition. The map shows it as that hatched area are all those areas that are non-benefited, and you can kind of even see through the, through this aerial image and, and the area, the pink would be the, the residential classification, and, and the rest of that blue is that class four, class four classification. So even the area along Carver Creek is, is non-benefited, and those lands kind of adjacent to that creek, there's just, there's no farming that takes place there and, and no burden placed on the ditch system. So therefore, no changes were made to the property. Time, time of travel issue for remote areas of the watershed and the, and the fifth land class benefits. So I apologize, I misspoke. Back in February, I said that we looked at this area and, and used a twenty-four-hour timeframe. We actually used a twenty-eight-hour timeframe. And so what you can see in that little box there is that water would get to that ditch all within thirty-three hours, but we, we capped it at, at twenty-eight. Anything over that additional five hours kind of really doesn't place that big of a burden, and so really what you would see there is the, we'll call it the magenta and pink areas of the watershed. Yeah, sure, that water gets there, but it's really not placing a, a large burden on, so, so we felt it wasn't appropriate to have them included. Would it be appropriate to add them in a fifth class? We also thought, no, because that, that burden of time that that ditch is getting inundated really isn't there. So for us, it, as, as a group of viewers, we looked at it and said, it, it didn't seem to make sense to, to start to add that in where this entire watershed would be benefited because that burden just isn't there. So we kept it as is, the, the, the class four lands reach out, and not just in the twenty-four to twenty-eight hours, but even less than twenty-four hours would have that class four designation. And again, these, these principles are, are supported in the Minnesota drainage. And again, these, these principles are, um, are supported in the Minnesota Drainage Guide Handbook. And so nothing that we've done here is, is, um, kinda outside of the norm. But each ditch system, especially a ditch system with such a large watershed, um, we do take into consideration different, uh, travel time instances where we're currently working on a, a system in Wadena County, uh, that is probably a forty thousand, forty-two thousand acre watershed, um, for our time travel, we use ten hours. And anything after ten hours became non-benefited just because there just wasn't that burden placed on the ditch system there. So each dis- each ditch system is a little different. But, but for this one, we felt that that twenty-eight, uh, and less was, was the way to go. Township ditches was probably the biggest thing that, that we had to, to look at. Um, both Benton and Waconia townships, uh, have authority over their drainage systems and are active. There is a benefits role, not necessarily housed with, uh, the county, the county did not have that information. But we determine and assign benefits for the township ditch systems. And so, um, even though the township ditches do not have a direct connection to the ditch, the watersheds have been improved for drainage and place a burden on that county system. So we removed individual property benefit in those areas. Um, you can kinda see the outline of the map. Waconia ditch one is that yellowish to the very north. Um, there is no benefit there, um, they're outside of, of really that timing issue. And they drain north through some lakes and then outlet into Lake Waconia. Waconia four, five is that area in purple. That's right kinda where the school is at, um, and, and part of, uh, the city of Waconia. So those landowners that are originally benefited in two, three, we removed them, but placed that benefit amount within the systems of, or within that township system of Waconia four and five. Uh, Benton Township one and two are those lower areas down there. They both drain into, um, well, what would be Carver Creek that then outlets and, and uses CD two, three as its outlet. So you can see there respectively that those, those systems are carrying a little bit of benefit. That's our, um, that's how we handled the questions that were, uh, brought forth during the public hearing. So that brings us kinda back to, to our recommendation. Uh, here is the, the land class map for the area. Uh, current benefits is eight hundred acres. Um, we see that the, the total watershed is just over forty thousand acres, but place benefits within sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five acres. Current benefits at fifteen thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Our proposed benefits are a little under fourteen million. Here's the, the breakdown of the, um, sub watershed adjustment factors. If you recall from the February, uh, we kinda score the ditch, um, and how much the, the water can handle during a, we'll say a modern day drainage of one inch per day, removing that water off of the landscape, um, the main ditch area. Um, nothing's at a hundred percent optimum. Um, the, the main ditch, um, is probably what we would consider a B score. So we reduced everyone's benefits, uh, by twelve and a half percent there. And conversely then up in the upper watersheds, those were reduced. There is a, a small branch, branch four, um, that is, um, really undersized for that little area. So that one got an F, but that's, for the most part, I think it's a, a decent drainage system, uh, based on modern drainage standards. And then here's the final breakdown of the different, uh, classifications of land, um, within the system. Again, total acres, uh, total amount damages, there's thirty-six point, um, four, seven acres of, of buffer that needs to be paid on the system. Uh, our recommendation is the damages would be thirty, just over thirty-six thousand dollars. And you can see there the, the prime acre, so that would be tillable land that was taken out of, um, production for that buffer, uh, was six thousand, five hundred dollars an acre. That's the recommendation and, and after going through the, the final hearing and the continued final hearing, that's the, that's our recommendation. Sorry for the fonts, it was, when I saved it to a PDF, it.
Happens.
It does work.
Yeah, monkeyed with the fonts. Any questions of the viewers?
Okay, so should we ask the public if they wanna comment?
Be appropriate to open the public comment period at this time, Mr. Chair. And again, I, the board has the discretion to just limit the comments to, um, the items that were reviewed during the reexamination.
Okay.
I'm gonna make the motion to open a public comment, Mr. Chair.
You got a motion of a second to open the public comment period? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Here we are. The people who actually own these ditches. Right? Tom?
I'd like to make a comment.
Comment.
I, I totally disagree with this whole thing. To begin with, the people that got that ditch going through the property are the ones that suffer. They don't, you know, uh, my farm is underwater, you know, number acres every year. That water that goes through my farm comes from three cities, four lakes, and they estimate in town, one inch rain per acre in residential property runs six thousand gallons runoff. And agriculture property only two thousand gallons runoff. And four neighbors, part of their water runs across my farm. I get water on the north side of a hundred tenth street. I get the water, there's, and two big farms behind us. Me and the two neighbors get all the water from them, three hundred and twenty acres. They do not hold any water. Them are the ones that are benefitted. Now, the spring is dry as a buzz. I had about six acres underwater. I'll bet you right now after last night, I bet you I got at least ten. The neighbor next to me was unable to plant this whole field because of that ditch. And yet we got the highest assessment because we got the ditch in our property. Whoever set that up is wrong because them are the ones that suffer. We pay taxes on that land and we can't use it. It's no good to us. So why do we have the highest assessment? It's people like behind me and across the road from me. Them are the ones that benefit from that ditch, not, not the ones that got, you know, most of us that got that ditch going through us. You know? And the other question I have is, are we paying? Because we got a private ditch thing going, doing nothing. Are we paying to help clean out all them other ditches? You know? And as far as literature, everybody gets all this stuff. At the last meeting, I was told I was gonna get that. I never get nothing. There is a card sent out now, I never got that. I don't get no, all the information, they keep telling me I'm gonna get it, but I don't get nothing. I have no, you know? It's, you, I've been living here for fifty-seven years, paying taxes, fifty-seven years. And I heard again the other day, well, you're not an original resident of Carver County. You can't expect the same thing we get. How many years do you have to live here? After being here for fifty-seven years, I should be considered a resident of Carver County, I think.
I agree. Sir, will you, uh, remind us your name and your address?
Pardon?
Would you remind us of your name and your address?
I gave it to him the last time.
Well, I, I wanna hear it though, and the tape recorder wants to hear it.
Okay.
Tell him your name, Joe, and your address.
Right now, you want it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's Joseph Neeson, one, one, two, five, five, at a hundred and tenth street, Sloan, five, five, three, two, two.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a response to that? I can hear the rain on my window back here.
Yeah, I can.
Mr. Neeson's was the property that we actually, you know, reexamined and, and, and looked at. And, uh, I mean, I understand that the, the flooding that's, uh, occurring, um, on his property, um, he has benefited as, as the, the lowest benefit, you know, that class fours is putting a, putting a burden on the ditch and, and, I mean, we understand that, that he's flooded. And, and we took into account those areas that are, that would be flooded and be non-benefited, so.
So you've taken it into account?
We have, and if we're removing him, we're removing a lot of folks, you know, like, but hi- his land drains and, and drains to the creek and, and puts a burden on it, that, that goes to two, three then. And I can, we can pull it up on a map if it, if it's better, but it's, uh, Mike, you might know where it's at a little bit easier.
Scott, did Joe get the information mailing about this or email? Or how did we contact him about the change or the review?
Um, I didn't have any phone numbers to call folks, so I didn't.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lynch, um, so Mr. Friesen would, would have, uh, received the original notification for our public hearing in February. Um, then there was, uh, additional, um, email, um, mailing that went out. But those would've been just the property owners that were within the township ditches. That's the ones that got the additional mailing. So, um, that was a, that was a limited number of people and I don't believe, uh, Joe would've been included in that. So he wouldn't have gotten anything more than, um, for this meeting, anything specific. That was just for that group of, um, ditch owners that were in those four township ditches.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
Scott, would you like me to comment while you're pulling stuff up? Um, so Mr. Chair, members of the board, the, the property that Joe Neeson has is several miles upstream on Carver Creek, um, upstream of our county ditch system. So county ditch two, three is a few miles downstream of this. Um, I think he may be confused that the maintenance and the activity occurring on his ditch, which is actually Carver Creek, I think years ago, some of the private landowners cleaned out and straightened that part of Carver Creek. But this area right here is not part of our county ditch two, three public system. It's actually part of Carver Creek. So what Mr. Henderson is saying is the water eventually gets to county ditch two, three. He's assessed at that class four level. Um, but we as a ditch authority are not actively managing this part of the, of the, of the stream right here. It's not part of our public ditch system, just to make everybody clear of that.
And so here's, here's his property and, and, and like we showed, you know, this area is kinda non-benefiting. And up in here where it's kinda wet is, is, is non-benefiting. You can tell it's been, it's been straightened, so it's private. Comes down, curls around, comes back, and then the county ditch actually starts right here. So there is natural waterway that flows, you know, I think two, three is Carver Creek. It's one and the same at that one location where legally the, the ditch began, or yeah, began right there. And, uh, Mr. Fishman's correct, he, he wouldn't have received a, an extra notice, would've received a, a landowner's packet. But nothing, nothing about like the township ditches that we sent extra for today.
So he's a long way from this.
Yeah.
Couple miles.
Couple miles, yes. Um, can you go back to the presentation? He would probably were roughly, sir, are you section three? Of Benton?
So he'd benefit at the number four, fourth clas- classification?
Yep, and he's, he's roughly right here. So he's not wrong, he is getting, he, that Carver Creek is taking a lot of water from, um, from like the Benton Township, um, ditch one, um, and, and, and this area. But his, his water is then getting to the, to the ditch right here. Is the water going quickly? No, cause Cologne, you know, city of Cologne is using county ditch, uh, two and using that and, and Carver Creek comes in right where that county ditch comes in also. So there, I mean, there's, there's a lot of water in that area. But through our process, you know, the, the area that's not being farmed or being used for agricultural property is being non-benefited. The, the rest of it though, that, that has been farmed and continues to be farmed, and you can look at it through aerial imagery, it is carrying a benefit because that water, you know, that land is being able to, to be farmed and, and, taken out of pre-settlement condition and, and be used for something. So that's, that's a good, that, that's our, that, that is our process to look and say, yep, the land has been slicked up or, or moved from a pre-settlement condition and, and agricultural proper, properties, uh, agricultural practices continue to get taken place on that property. So it would be a benefited property.
So if a person had six to ten acres that was flooding, uh, today, is that when they tile it? Or, so specifically to his flooding issue, what is Joe asking for? He's saying, I have less property, I should be paying less on the ditch because I can't use my land, more of my land, and that's a disagreement with you, correct?
Um, we're not saying that he's using less than his land, he's using the land that we are benefiting. That's, that's all. He hasn't taken, he hasn't taken more land out of agricultural prac- practices and put it into a program or, or let it go back to pre-settlement conditions. Therefore, that acre is, is benefiting from that ditch.
Even the acres that are wet?
Well, the acres that are wet, that, this would be non, you know, non-benefited. Up in here, this area that looks like it drains to like a wet area is non-benefited. Everything else seems to be cropped. At least in this aerial, maybe there's a small spot here, but going back, you know, we're talking as best as we can look at aerial imageries and, and continue to see that all this area is, is cultivated. So for us, that's a benefit.
Mr. Chair, can I just point out that on, on the screen, um, Joe had indicated he thought about twenty acres flood. And, uh, according to the viewers, they're actually designated that twenty-four point one, five acres are flooding. So that's, he, they're actually above what, you know, Joe's ballpark number was. So it seems like they're in agreement on, on how much of the acres are flooding on his property.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Klingelhutz, good to see ya.
Good to see you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Mike Klingelhutz. Uh, farm's at seventy-nine, forty Airport Road, another farm, um, on highway ten by the, the school that my family owns. And that was part of the, the redistribution of township tile stuff. I have a couple of photos here of, uh, I'm not sure you guys understand how big the, the municipal outlets are and how they relate to the water coming down the ditch. So I would like to share these with you.
I think you emailed these to us earlier.
This is a photo of the municipal, at the, uh, from the school. This is a photo of some of the damage and cost, or how much water it's in, if you can pass.
Yep.
Anyways, the entire watershed is forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three acres and only sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four acres of it are being assessed. That's forty-one percent. That's 41%. The study says 4,360 acres are urban residential, the cities of Waconia and Cologne. Most of that's Waconia. That's 26% of the, uh, acres being assessed. He put the slide up there that said that Waconia is only paying 9% of, of the total assessment. And I'm wondering why the ag land, um, is being charged so much more than the urban residential, especially when there's outlets like up to, I guess between 18 and, or between 10 and 20 outlets of that size coming from the city of Waconia into the ditch and, and draining into the established drainage system? I was wondering if Scott could answer that.
Why, why the urban acre, uh, urban residential acre is charged so much less than an agricultural acre? Keep in mind the giant municipal outlets.
So we don't look at, um, we don't look at the size of outlets or, or rates when we're looking at an urban area, an urban area for us is, is just one of the many different classifications of land. Ag land for us is, is the reason why ditches were even created in the first place in the state of Minnesota and established was to, was to drain the land and make them more, I don't want to say profitable, make them more productive agriculturally. And so that is the justification for doing, uh, benefits. The land is benefited because of, um, able to take it out of a pre-settlement condition and, and put it into a, um, a productive landscape that, uh, every year can go in and, and, and be farmed. You know, um, a house that doesn't really, isn't there to, to, to make money or turn profit or, or produce anything, uh, much like the agricultural land is that, uh, is truly benefiting from, from the ditch system. So that's, that's our basis for, for doing this, not only in Two Three, but uh, in, in every ditch system that we look at that has a little urban drainage to it.
But is, aren't, aren't Mr. Neeson and Mr. Klingelhutz kind of saying the same thing? The impervious surfaces of these smaller, maybe urban areas are adding a significant amount of water to the system? So you're saying maybe we don't, there, there isn't a way to, they're not, well, I mean.
Well, I, I, Mr. Chair, I know where you, what you're getting at. I would also say though that the city of, of Waconia, um, has a very robust stormwater management plan, part of the One Watershed One Plan. There are, um, any new developments, uh, I think even the school has, uh, holding ponds to help control that flow. On agricultural land, it's, they don't have that, as, that type of control structure, it's mostly pipes that water drains through and goes right to the ditch system. So, um, we, again, you know, the, the, the city putting in, if, if we really wanted to get down to it and, and, and do more studies and, and all that we can, but is the, where, where's that end? You know, then, then are we going to go to a farmer that has a pumping system and, and regulate that? Now, the, the Drainage Authority could regulate the, the flow of water through, but that's not for us to determine. We determine just the, the straight benefits of, of water coming off that land.
Well, and Chen Asin, I pay a stormwater fee, right?
And I'm sure City of Waconia also has a stormwater fee, I'm assuming.
I have a couple more questions. The study says that they hired Houston, oh, the study says they hired Houston Engineering to do a three meter by three meter study of the watershed. Did they identify all those municipal outlets that are feeding water into an established downstream ditch system? Scott, did you identify all the municipal outlets? How many there are?
Yeah, um,
How many?
I mean, I don't know off the top of my head how many outlets there are into the ditch system, but again, for us, we, we looked at that urbanized area, both in, in Cologne and, and Waconia and, and assessed them a, a benefit that we feel is, is adequate.
That's surprising that they don't know how many outlets their urban municipal outlets are, there are. I went looking yesterday, drove on Highway, uh, 10 and I spied four within 10 minutes. And if you drive by the Falk property that's being developed now, the first thing they do is they're putting in the stormwater, uh, system so that they don't have to deal with the stormwater, uh, when they're grading the rest of the system and that, that Falk property, 300 acres is going to have outlets right into the ditch also. Right into the established drainage system. Anyways, I, I, I'm just trying to make the point that I don't think that the, um, urban rate is fair compared to the agricultural rate. The, the cities are required to deal with the first inch of water, but then once you get, once you get in the rainy season or a storm like we're having today, there's those huge outlets that flush a ton of water down the ditch system and, and flood Mr. Neeson's land. And like on my farm, I have a six inch tile outlet and that thing is 48 inch and per acre, I'm paying way more than the urban area. Moving on to specifically to my farm, the board asked him to look at the retention time of, uh, the wetlands in Section 21 and 22. He said, we didn't do it because then we'd have to do it for everybody else in the, in the watershed, I mean, that's what, that's what I gathered from what he wrote up there. And I got involved in this because, um, our family owns a farm in Waconia Township and I own, you know, I, I have one in Lake Town and, um, I got the, the assessment notices for both of them. And the one in Waconia Township, um, if it wasn't for tile, it wouldn't be a farm, it would all be swamp. And that assessment is approximately a third per acre of what my assessment is in Lake Town Township, which, which drains into a wetland and the water disappears. So I'm just looking for this to be fair, I'm not, uh, and, and equitable, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to escape my responsibility, in fact, I told Scott that, uh, if, if he would change my, uh, home farm designation to the lowest quality agricultural land, I, I'd be fine with that. So I'm not trying to escape an assessment, I acknowledge that there is some water that runs off my farm, but when you compare it to the municipal areas, municipal outlets in the urban, it's, it's, it's not a fair assessment. So now I got some, uh, questions for the attorney. How long have the redeterm, how long have the redetermination of benefit laws that allow a ditch authority to collect fees for municipal outlets that are downstream of an, on an established drainage system been on the books?
Mr. Cole?
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Klingelhutz, your, your question kind of combines a few different things. So redetermination of benefits is something that's always been an option for drainage authorities. I can say with confidence since at least 1947 and likely, it, there are sections of the Drainage Code that predate that, that reflect that process for redetermining benefits or reallocating benefits on a drainage system. Municipal outlet and other, uh, types of proceedings, I think were added after 1947. And so I, I guess that, that answers your question, they've been on the books for a long time. But each of those various statutory provisions are used in different contexts, depending on the circumstances. And in the instance where we're doing a redetermination of benefits, we are, we are looking at, uh, current conditions of versus like a pre-ditch, a pre, a no ditch, uh, situation. And oftentimes in a redetermination of benefits, we collect up past use of the drainage system that was not, uh, was not brought in according to other proceedings. So this becomes then a reset of the entire ditch system.
Thank you, I got another question for him. Do you think there's an obligation by a public body to use available state statutes that are, uh, basically tools to, that, you know, they provide tools and opportunities to effectively manage and finance the operation of, of the ditch? I mean, you said these have been available since 1947, it's, it's 2025. It seems to me like if you, if the ditch authority had been collecting municipal outlet fees over the years, we wouldn't be here, we'd, we would have had enough money to pay for the buffers for the, the ditch system. Is there a obligation by a public body to use the tools that are available to them?
Mr. Chair, first, I think there's an implication that the only reason we're doing the redetermination of benefits is to pay, uh, for, uh, buffers, and that is not correct. This board made a determination and it's reflected in the actual change in acreage, benefited acres that are being recommended by the viewers, that the benefited areas have changed. So I, I think we got to clarify that, 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 um, that implication of that comment. My, I'm going to offer a single opinion, my opinion is that government, just like citizens, should follow the law. Um, and that is exactly what the board's doing here. There is, there is no requirement to go back and, 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 uh, correct past mistakes, if you've made a mistake, you don't have to continue to make it. Um, and so I think the board has taken an appropriate action to move forward to basically reset this drainage system and account for all of the burdens that are being placed on it by the various uses, including private property, uh, use and, uh, municipal use as outlets for municipal stormwater and other, other, uh, other public uses.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to beleaguer you, but I got a couple more. If I appeal this, uh, is, is the only option to appeal, uh, my assessment or can I appeal the whole, the whole, uh, study?
Mr. Cole?
Mr. Chair, the, Mr. Klingelhutz, there are provisions in the Drainage Code that will answer that question for you. So you can look at those provisions, 103E.091 specifically, and it will explain to you what your options would be if you're dissatisfied with the outcome of these proceedings.
I haven't had a chance to look at it, you're not going to answer?
I don't work for you, I'm not going to give you an opinion, I gave you the, I gave you the statutory site, so you can look it up yourself.
Did you catch that statutory number?
91.
It's recorded.
Okay, the next question was also related to that. Who, who's responsible for the court cost?
Mr. Chair, the costs of appeal are paid by the appellant's and regardless, the costs of this drainage authority are paid for by the entire ditch system.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike. And Colleen.
I'll be brief, Colleen Klingelhutz, uh, spouse of Mike, same properties. Uh, the point was made by Scott, traditional drainage was to benefit ag land. I don't argue that traditionally. Now, however, all of this drainage stuff really benefits the urban residential. You don't see people's backyards ponding, you don't see people's backyards having little wetlands and things, they've got bigger, uh, water retention ponds that, as Mike pointed out, once they collect an inch of water, then they get to just spew it. So I agree, I don't think the determination of benefits and the assessments to private agricultural compares at all to what the cities and municipalities are being assessed at.
Steve Rodmacher? Ditch Two Benton Township. 11970 Market Avenue, Cologne. Own land there, 107 acres. And just like Klingelhutz said and Neeson said, Neeson and me especially, and I don't, can't vouch for Klingelhutz, but probably the same issue is, we're going to get three inches of rain, I was at two and a half when I left home today. Two days after it quits raining, my peat ground's going to have six to eight inches of water in it. It backs up after the fact, whether it comes from Cologne, whether it comes from Waconia, whether it comes from the school that he's talking about. The, the, the ditch system can only handle so much water, especially that we're dumping more in. Besides, we're going to add another 384 homes on Little Avenue in the next five years, six years. I don't know the, the actual figure there, but it's in the works. So all this water easily runs to the ditch. The outlet can't take it, so it backs up into Neeson's, Klingelhutz's mine. And that's where a lot of our problem is coming from. And the other thing is that you have some farmers putting in 12 inch drainage tile, which their land drains out a lot faster, us guys with the low land, you can't put a, a bigger tile in or even a tile because we don't have the capacity in the ditch for the water to go down low enough to get out. Where you talk 45, 50 years ago, we did not have this issue. Me, Joe Neeson, that's one of the things that Joe Neeson was talking about last time and this time. Forty and 50 years ago, this land that's underwater today, whether there's benefits or not, we still losing property that we paid for. So with these, with what's happening, there's that much more water that's backing up after the rain is substantially over. Within two to three days, you'll have water back in, uh, you can come out and you can actually take a look at that. And that's one of the things I think Joe was talking about last time, when he got up here. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm Sue Lowey, 12050 Highway Five, Cologne, Minnesota. You may know my place, if you go down Highway Five after a two to three inch rain, you'll see Lake Lowey. That's my lowland. Okay, the only reason I'm here is first to say this has got to be a hell of a hard job for you guys and I appreciate your work. Now, after I say that, I got to find my spot here. There it is. If it wasn't for these ditches, okay, and that have been draining farm, family farmland for over 100 years, okay, in many cases anyway, at least 100 years. I think Wagner's in Baccamy, I think that was 150. Okay, the development schools, hospitals and, and the consumer spaces would have no way to get water drainage from their property, which means you would be losing, uh, if they can't build on it, they ain't gonna, which means you'd be losing businesses, which would be tax dollars. Okay? But the ag ditches now are doing such, so much more because they're also draining those businesses and the school and the hospital, and they're also trying to drain off their land. Okay, when they're draining off their land, there are usually, I bet you it's got to be at least 75% of the time, we are the last, the farmlands are the last ones to get drained, correct?
Correct, that's what I, exactly.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, so what I'm saying here is there's got to be some way to benefit the farmers under those circumstances. For, well, for one thing, what the hell are you going to eat when they're gone? Okay, so I'm just talking about doing something about the benefits of these farmlands that are no longer first in line to get their land drained off, so they can get farming. Okay? Okay, so what else of it, one more thing, one more thing. No, not one more thing, I got it all, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Complicated stuff. All right, seeing nobody else, do we want to have a motion to close the public?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Portion?
Second.
A motion by Lynch and a second by Anderson to close the public comment period. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion passes. Back to the board.
Mr. Chair, if I could, um, Mr. Henderson, um, I heard, um, Section 21 was not reduced, I've heard you- heard you say that was reduced by over 6%.
The benefits were not reduced per the land?
Yes.
But it was reduced because of the drainage into Reeds Lake and the attenuation that that Reeds Lake gives that that small watershed.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. I thought you had, we had a lot of wonderful comments. I thought that you had wonderful comments. Mr. Neeson's here, and Mr. Rodemacher, they both said the same thing, that water comes in at a high rate. And you said that it does because there's more, much more, Mr. Rodemacher said 50 years ago, there's much more land that's tiled now. So it's going to come higher. It's going to take the, the first inch as much as possible. I heard about the city of Waconia. The city of Waconia has a very robust water management plan. I'm even not if you're aware of this, but they try to capture as much as water as they possibly can. I know that the old water tower is used to capture water, and then they use it for a watering system. How much they can grab? Mr. Rodemacher said we had over three inches. I'm sure they can't grab that much, but the other good point that you had is that they have a water management system where they try to grab the first inch, whereas agricultural just tries to get rid of it. The other ironic thing is I was talking to a gentleman from Wyoming, and we were talking about water. And I always have my comment about, Mark Twain said that whiskeys were drinking, waters were fighting over. Out there, they try to capture as much of the water as they possibly can. And I had a hard time explaining to him that here we try to get rid of the water as fast as we possibly can. And
And the whiskey.
And he couldn't, he couldn't fathom that. But I, my comments are, I'm glad we looked at this in February. We didn't have it accurate as possibly can. We want to be as accurate as we possibly can, so we took a look at it. And the public was right. We found other different things. We found township drainage as it drained into this. So then it changed up a little bit. We reduced some by 6% because of the 28-hour travel time. Is this perfect? And I love the comment by, by Sue. I love the guys who do. It's a hard job, but I love that. That was wonderful comments. With that, those are my comments. I'm glad we did a wonderful job. I think it's, are we going to keep everyone happy with this? No, no, we're not. But did we look and try to make it as accurate as possibly can? I think we, personally, I believe we did, but that's my comment, sir.
Anybody else? I think it's hard for, for us sitting up here to imagine how we might change what, what you've done. And I know, I know the brain of Mr. Klingelhutz well enough to know he's got, got some good angles. He may, may need to research the litigation part of it, but it would be very hard for this board to say, okay, well, we're going to, we're going to just tweak because we know better than these guys. So we're, we are, we're in a tough situation. We surely want fairness. I wish I was paying attention back when Shen Hassan was developing and what was going on, because we had those, these problems as everything moved. We're already out to, is it Sue? We're already out to Sue's house out there in my lifetime. And, and so it's hard to, it's hard to imagine how Commissioner Anderson could make a motion that make everybody
Right.
happy in the room. So we kind of have to go by our experts. Well, kind of, we sort of have to. And for lack of a, another option, I don't, I don't know what we do. Commissioner Rubin, you got an option?
Well, I think that we all have different customers, right? Like John said earlier, like you guys are our customers, so we have to look at this differently. And, and I always look for solutions or listen to solutions. I heard, I heard, the problem from, that I heard was, my grandpa was a farmer for a bunch of years in Iowa, and that's probably my closest tie to farming. You drive down 212, and you see things have changed, 5, all the things that are going on, the growth in Waconia, et cetera. The question that I don't have answered leaving today is, if there's an increase in non-benefited land, the least amount of cost is that assessment. The most amount of cost or the value to you lost is that acreage. And so if Joe comes in in two years, and it's not just 20 acres, it's 30 acres, I don't, I don't know what that solution is. Valid points, and I'm the least close to it because I don't live in the rural community. You know, you get the rural city divide type stuff, but I'm listing like, what is, what is the solution? We heard the problem, that, that number of those unbenefited acres that you're not paying for is, you don't get to enjoy those or use them. I don't know what the solution is. And so you guys, we, we report to you guys. We work for you guys. John goes home, right? H2O goes home, but I don't know the answer to how do you solve what you guys have painted as potential injustice, I guess. I don't know that answer. And so I, I guess I lean on Tim and Tom and JP, and they know this stuff way better than I do. If we're 90-some percent of their there as a community, can we get a little bit further without, without burdening the 96% that this works for? And I don't know that answer. So that's kind of where I'm at. I think we all agree that it's not perfect by any means, and I hear you, but I, I don't have the answer to, if your land, your usable land shrinks, it doesn't matter how much you're paying for assessment, whether you're paying for it or not, right? You lost land. So, and today's a good day to talk about it, I think, with three, three inches, because you're going to go home and you're going to look out your window, and you're going to get pissed off, like, but I don't know what the solution is. So those are my thoughts.
I think one of those, excuse me, and sorry, Mr. Chair, if you don't want me to say anything, I don't have to. But I think one of the issues that, that the landowners have brought up is that the ditch isn't handling their water. Doesn't really have to do much with the benefits, but the ditch isn't handling their water, and there's a lot of folks that are using that ditch. We're going from a watershed of, or a benefited area of 800 acres. So when you think about how many people would be paying today for a repair on that system, it's miniscule to the amount of folks that are actually really using that ditch. And so I think it gives the charge to Mike and David to, to look at that system, and is there, is there ways in the farming landscape and the urban to, to build in more storage? Again, that doesn't affect our, necessarily our process, but I think they're bringing very good points that we hear. Me and John have heard those kind of points all over the state. You know, it's, there's a lot more water coming through the systems, and the systems just weren't designed to handle that, that flow. And so you guys are in a hard spot. So that's just my comment.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, just, if I could just poll the board on a few questions, and then I think I can, I can make a suggestion that might get us through today at least. The first question is, is there anything you've heard today that would cause the board to want the viewers to go out and reexamine anymore than has already been done? I'm, I'm seeing no real appetite for that. The second one is, is, and again, you, you raised this, Mr. Chair. You appoint the viewers, viewers have certain qualifications, they come back with a recommendation. You hear their recommendation, you hear the public comment. In this case, you sent them back out to do some reexamination. They came back with their report on reexamination, explained to you how they approached the assignment given to them by you in that reexamination, and then gave you a revised recommendation. You do have the ability to alter the viewer's recommendation, but you're going to have to have some evidence that's going to cause you to do that. And, and I think, as you've pointed out, Mr. Chair, and maybe other board members feel the same way, you're not really sure what to do with the public comment and how you might modify the viewer's recommendation. What comes into the next question then is, based on what you know and what we've talked about, the requirements are for the viewers, they have to look at every acre within the watershed of the drainage system. They have to classify lands according basically to their situation in the landscape and various factors. And the viewers went through a presentation on all of the different considerations they give to individual lands, so that the board can have confidence that they've treated similarly used or similarly situated properties in a similar way. So knowing that that's kind of the charge that are given to the viewers, and, and knowing now how the viewers went about doing that work, and having received their reports and their, their amended reports and the explanations of how they got there, would you be able to find, would the board generally be able to find that the viewers' reports have been made and other, the proceedings have otherwise been completed in a manner consistent with the code? And if that's a yes, then we move to the next question, which is, do we believe that, again, given the fact that we can't get it perfect, do you believe that they are sufficiently correct to be defensible should they be challenged? And if that's a yes, then we go again to, do you believe that they treated everyone fairly and that they, they came up with a reasonable value for the various damages or benefits or the damages as they've been allocated? And if you find that to be a yes, then we would go forward and adopt the viewer's recommendation and complete the redetermination of benefits. In this case, we have a lot of information that needs to be distilled into a set of findings. We want to be able to adequately address the comments that have been made in the public comment process, and, and also document what the viewers did in their reexamination and how they approached that. So I don't think today we would be in a situation to adopt detailed findings in an order, but I do think the board might be in a situation today to give guidance to staff, to prepare that detail of findings in order with a specific outcome in mind for the board's consideration at its next regular meeting at an appropriate time on the board's agenda. And so if that's the direction the board would want to go, then, Mr. Chair, you could entertain a motion to continue this hearing to a date, time, and location articulated on the record. And again, our recommendation would be the next regular meeting of the board. And then we would recess, have this hearing for the sole purpose of considering a set of detailed findings in an order in whatever direction the board gives me to, to write them.
So we are going to have another meeting. Right?
Unless you want me on the fly to go through five pages of findings in an order today, which I think could be tedious and unpleasant for everyone in the room, I would recommend that you do continue. But again, it's for the sole purpose of giving me guidance, allowing me to develop a set of draft findings in an order, a detailed set of findings for the board to consider in advance, and then to consider and adopt at whatever continuation meeting.
I think the common thread of the speakers, the landowners here today, and the one point that they maybe have instilled in me, the insecurity in me is the math on the, on the urban input, suburban input to the system. And so if you could maybe help us to better understand, Mr. Rodemacher said, you know, 356 new homes, multiply that times three people, so there wasn't 1,500 people living there, but now there is. And now there's impervious surface, and there's, I mean, it's, it, it certainly makes it a little difficult to understand how the flow of water, I think, I think I heard that that neighborhood isn't benefiting, benefiting like ag, but the water has to go somewhere. So I'm, I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for the board, but it seems to me that that, that's a common thread of, I'm butting up against this suburban area that's, that's expanding out, and it's potentially changing the flow of water in these ditches. So what is our math correct? Is, is, I'm not picking on the city of Waconia, they do, do a good job. But what, what is the city, what's the city's, what do we say, they were 9% of it? So if I could get a, if I could be a little bit more confident in that math for the next meeting, that would be my only concern. Anybody else?
I, I would agree. It, it's, I don't know if we need any more studies. I mean, I'm, I'm grateful that we did it. We went back and, and did that. It gives me more confidence. But I would agree, it's, it's, it's the math. That's what's bothering me. And the fact that Joe Neeson has 24 acres that he can't use, and I don't know how do we
But they took that into account.
Yeah, true. Okay.
I think, I think the visuals from Mr. Klingelhutz, it's a pretty big wide pipe that wasn't there 20 years ago, or 10, maybe. But so, well, good job, Mike. But yeah, that, that's a little bit of an insecurity for me. Commissioner Fahy's been kind of quiet. Are you going to abstain today?
I am.
Okay. Anybody else? So you want to refashion that motion for me?
I certainly will give it a try, Mr. Chair.
You say it, we'll approve it.
Let, let, let me make sure I understand what you're asking. Are you asking for the viewers to provide a more clear definition or explanation of how they calculate municipal drainage benefit? Again, so that you understand the math? Or are you asking them to relook at that and consider adjusting the municipal benefit to the cities that are utilizing ditch two dash three as an outlet?
Sounds expensive.
I, I, I think maybe you just need to understand better how, when we say 9%, again, that's kind of how it flushes out in the grand scheme of the total. But it might be better, it might be well-suited to just have us include for your consideration in advance of the findings, an explanation of how the viewers go about calculating municipal benefit. And I think that's probably something the viewers can put together pretty quickly.
Sure.
Okay, so I think the motion then would be, well, let's ask this question. When is your next regular meeting?
June 3rd.
June 3rd? Okay, so it would be a motion to continue the hearing to the board's regular meeting on June 3rd in this location at 9 o'clock or thereafter at an appropriate time on the board's agenda, and with direction to the viewers to provide an explanation of how they calculate municipal benefits for your consideration along with the detailed findings in order.
So move.
Second.
Okay, to the Coe motion. I have a motion by Lynch. It's now the Lynch motion, and a second by Anderson. Any further discussion?
Just one thing. I'd imagine that offline, Mike and his team, and it's probably not your job, can, can I have the discussions of, is it undersized? Is there more, you know, is there a place that it can be retained? Because from the solution side, what we're voting on today is not the solution of
Right.
of what Joe and the other people in the room brought forth. So I'm hoping that that's being happened, happening offline, to be like, okay, what do we do about that? Next, next time he comes back and it's 30 acres, we still haven't solved it, and it's not your issue. So I'm hoping that those conversations with Mike and team are going on. Does an eight-inch pipe go 12-inch? Is there a place for, when we're doing a road, we can add more retention space? That's the solution side that I kind of want to hear. And so it's not tied to the vote, but I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Same.
Okay, other discuss, any other discussion?
Only other discussion is, you mentioned it, Mr. Chair, and it says related fiscal FTE comments. All ditch costs are paid by the benefiting landowners. So as far as we kick this down the road further, it's going to be more expensive to the benefiting landowners.
Correct.
That's right. Correct.
Well, and that can be said about anything we do at this table.
True.
Right, but when, my point is that we're not expanding it to the, our, our budget. This is the benefiting landowners specifically.
Right. Thank you for that. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes four to nothing with Commissioner Fahy abstaining. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I move to recess as the county ditch authority and reconvene as the county board.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Uterman.
I know, he's seen, he has usurped you, man.
And a second by Commissioner Anderson. To recess as the county ditch authority and reconvene as the county board, seeing no discussion. All those in favor say aye. 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 Those opposed, motion passes. Mr. Hemsey.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief as we're breaking up, it sounds like. Schedule issues. So to, this coming Tuesday, May 27th, your strategic, strategic planning meeting, that will be with division directors at 9 o'clock. We head it from 9 to 3. Both Dave Unmucked and I think we can finish that up by 1:00, maybe. We hope, with a lunch, maybe. You want to get out to Coney Island finally, Commissioner Anderson or others?
I would like that, if it's nice.
Maybe we could, I'll try and line that up with Parks. I know they can maybe grab a pontoon and get you out there. Yeah, you definitely want to visit that.
Why don't you bring your boat?
If you want to go fishing, too. Can I, can I get paid for that? I didn't think of that.
Probably.
Yeah, so now, well, we Yeah, and so, now, we'll, we sent out the agenda and I can tack that on. Are other commissioners interested in that?
Sure, sure.
I know, I know most of you have been there, right? But would be good to see it again. Looks like a nice day so far, if I, I looked ahead in the weather. Yeah, so we have a document coming to you that the division directors helped craft, I know you, you drafted it, division directors helped with that, and then Dave and I and Ari are working with division directors to finalize that. So Thursday at noon, we'll get that in your hands for review, and then we'll talk about that again next Tuesday. And then another meeting change here, at least I wanna make sure we, you're all okay with it. Moving the September sixteenth meeting to September twenty-third. That, that was due to the DC fly-in for Commissioners Fahy and Workman. Only, only a few of you responded, so are we good with that change? So you can guess it, Krista, you can make that change. Now, again, just a reminder, and I think you all know, but, know this, but just to clarify, so we set the schedule in January by statute, that's required, and if we're changing it, then, then we'd need to call it a special session, Krista? So, it's like kind of quirky things in law, which we tend to forget because it just seems a little strange to call that a special one, but that's how we'll handle it. Very, very similar to a regular session, except for the fact we change it later during the year, which we do once in a while. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Well, if I could, you've mentioned special session, how is the state legislature, what do we know?
Well, we met with our lobbyists, Tony Albright, this morning, and Commissioner Workman and Urderman can jump in, but we don't know a lot more as compared to what we knew yesterday, the week before. Still, it doesn't look like real good news for us, so we're, we're talking about, talked to Mr. Chair Workman again about how, let's continue making sure others, including our delegation in particular, understand the potential negative implications of what may come out of the session. Because it really still is pointing toward cost shifts, in particular in our health and human services area. So we're, we're continuing to fight against that as a fundamentally unfair tactic, and certainly we're not alone, you know, we're hearing AMC, Mike, any of the metros, other counties. So, but stay tuned, we'll, we'll hope for the best, prepare for the worst, that's sort of the motto right now, and we'll, we'll be back with, with you, hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll get Tony in the room, and Commissioner Workman and Urderman, you have things to add to that?
I don't, I don't know who, this is for you or for Commissioner Workman, but they're gonna have a special session, when would that be, and then?
Well, they wanna have, have it all worked out by tomorrow. I think tomorrow, and then go right into a special session, maybe three days, and I don't believe any of that is gonna happen.
So how long have they been in session, then they're gonna work it out in three days?
Yeah. Was that a hypothetical?
I think Tony said zero chance, just the logistics of doing it that quickly, so maybe a bit of a show to say, well, we're gonna get, gotta do this quickly. He was right about the hundred percent chance on the special session, as I think others were here, so. But stay tuned, it, it's not over till it's over, and you know, it is a proverbial sausage making process, hopefully it tastes as good as sausage, right? At the end here, but boy, this is shaping up to be an, sort of an unprecedented session to the negative side for us, and hope, you know, again, hopefully, let's, let's hope for the best. And I, I think really, and Commissioner Workman knows this really well, things happen at the last minute, you know, and, and, by the way, the legislature doesn't subscribe to the same laws that you do, in terms of open meetings and transparency, they are behind the scenes, which is part of the challenge, right?
Yep.
So we're working full bore, and we got Tony and others down there advocating for us, but I think the more you and others can get out the word of the potential impacts on our services, the better, because it really, really to me, looks very concerning on, on how we do business here, and if nothing else, the level of service that we provide, then that, that is concerning, really extremely concerning. So, so again, stay tuned. Unfortunately, you know, reading through all the, all the information I get, there's, there's no information you can really pick up, you know, very, I shouldn't say no, very little information, because these bills just haven't been, you know, HHS, for example, it hasn't been addressed or talked about, or there's been no information sent out other than the, the budget agreement, which, if you've seen it, it's a one-page document, right? And it's simply a roadmap and it has the big numbers, you know, what, what, what are the, what are the spending targets, right? Commissioner Workman, you give some one-on-one on this too. Which is confusing to everybody, it's like, what's spending targets, what does that mean? Well, the devil's in the details, as they get into now the conference committees, and they have, so they have their marching orders, but it really comes down to these committees that are, will be working on. Just about, they're not all reductions, by the way, but most of them are, including the biggest concern for us, which is health and human services.
You know, an example, nineteen ninety-nine, when I became the chairman of the House Policy Transportation Committee, but I, we had a lot of cash, and we secured a hundred and fifty million, which sounds like not a lot of money today, to build out in Eden Prairie, four ninety-four from two twelve to a hundred. So there's a hundred and fifty million there, by the time it was getting ready to spend that money, near the end of my term in oh one oh two, we were running, the state was running out of money, and Governor Ventura didn't wanna raise taxes, so he started looking for cash. So there was a hundred and fifty million in cash for this road project. And this is just one little sliver, so even as a chair, I wasn't in the room, you know, Speaker Swigum and the leadership are all in these meetings, and so I had to follow, literally follow Speaker Swigum around at three in the morning and remind him that we needed that hundred and fifty, don't take my hundred and fifty, it was mine, a hundred and fifty million dollars, and set us back on that freeway again, and so it, it worked, I got to keep it, but imagine now a thousand other little things that, that, and with such tight tied-up majority, anybody and everybody, even our own legislators, can switch the game, and so it's gonna be not pretty, and I think Commissioner Urderman's gonna owe me a steak sandwich.
And that's a great example, Mr. Chair, if I could, about you said all the way from two twelve all the way over to a hundred, and then later down the road when they redid one sixty-nine and four ninety-four, that intersection alone was like two billion dollars, was it not?
I don't remember the number, but it was bad. All right, any other comments, seeing none, thank you, Administrator Hemsey, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Urderman, second by Anderson, to adjourn. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Man, it's hard to beat Urderman.